Say hi Andy, I'm recording you. I got you. Yes, they are. You know what's really criminal? Those knee-high socks.
Next on our agenda is Dave Kalin running for county commissioner. And he's heading up here right now. We've got a bunch of questions here. Again, we'll follow up on these and then we'll have time if we miss something in our question that anyone wants to know, okay?
Good evening. My name's Dave Kalin. Live in District 2 out in the Ranchettes, running for Charlotte County Commissioner. A lot of folks ask the first question is, "Why are you running?" Well, my wife, a number of years ago, I was in politics in the state of Pennsylvania. I was a commissioner there. Also sat on quite a few different committees: Planning Committee, Community Redevelopment, Library Board, our Ambulance Association, quite a few different committees. So I've been involved in quite a bit throughout politics and my wife said, "Yep, you're never running again." My family life was pretty much revolved around what was going on in our community. And given that fact, we brought our four children and moved to southwest Florida because of what was going on in the state of Pennsylvania. Anybody that knows Pennsylvania, New York, New Jersey understands what goes on there and that is taxes, taxes, and more taxes. You have multiple layers of government. So brought my kids, my wife, our family down here. My folks just moved down here this year. Fell in love with the area. Been coming down for a number of years before we moved here and pretty much had the pick of the litter of where we wanted to move in Florida. And we settled on Punta Gorda, southwest Florida. It's beautiful. While we don't have the blue water beaches, it does keep the massive crowds away. So that is one of the things we do have going for us, while some folks do like that blue water. I'm okay driving a little bit to get to it, to keep the traffic down and to keep the cost of our area down, which is why I'm running. It's starting to get expensive to live here. I think anybody that realizes what's going on, it's not just the current federal administration driving it, but a lot of the local things going on. You've got the folks trying to come out of the north. They're tired of the taxes. They're tired of the oppression. They're tired of the mandates, the "you gotta wear a mask, you gotta get a shot, you can't this, you can't that, it's not your land, you can't, you can't, you can't." And we've got probably one of the greatest governors in the country who has decided to stand up for our rights. And that has helped make that decision to say, "You know what? I've got some abilities to get out there, the knowledge in maintenance, whether it's road maintenance, construction, the real estate, the development, to be involved in this." And my wife said, "You've gotta get back into this." I said, "I'm just waiting for you to say so." So this year with everything that went on with the Ranchettes, many of you have paid attention to what went on out there over the past year. The county just kind of crumpled us up, tossed to the side like the red-headed stepchild and said, "No more maintenance. You're on your own." Well, it's actually worked out pretty well for us because we pulled together as a community. And we've realized we don't need to spend those exorbitant amounts of money to maintain our roads, which prompted me to start looking into county budgets, expenditures, what's going on behind the scenes. And it's amazing in Charlotte County how they don't want you looking behind the curtain. So I'm running to do an overhaul in this county. We have got to look at every department and ask, "Why are we spending the money and do we need to spend the money?" We've got to look at your rights. Our rights are being trampled on on a daily basis by this county. They want to come out, they want to have an arbitrary ordinance, well, you can't do that in your yard. "We don't like the color of those flowers, we don't like that tree you planted there." They just generate an ordinance and tell you, "You can't do it." You have the city of Punta Gorda who's got this wonderful sign ordinance that if they don't like what you put on your sign, they don't like what you have to say, well, they just violate your civil rights, take you to the little kangaroo court and, well, there you go, you're stuck paying a fine. There are a number of people that are fighting back around it. And I'd like to help keep that fight the whole way through the county. Stand up for your rights and as well as reduce what we're spending. Our commissioners have spent an exorbitant amount of money over the past three decades on purchasing property and land throughout the county. I think everybody knows the Sid Kitson situation with Murdoch Village and the money that was spent there. And then he just said, "Yeah, I'm not interested." And well, what's he to do, go out to bat talk? So now the county is sitting there with an exorbitant amount of land and they're quibbling over a couple thousand dollars here, a couple thousand dollars there in the hottest real estate market ever, but they're willing to lose a quarter million dollars on property out on the waterfront. While I am an Allegiant employee, I am not a fan of the Sunseeker. When you see what's going on there and knowing the Allegiant model, they're not in our best interest. While they are a great company coming into the area, bringing the flights into here, keeping the airport viable, the Sunseeker is one of those things, they will bring their own people in. If anybody's paid attention to what's going on with the Sunseeker situation, from the beginning, we should have had some parking issues figured out. We should have had the "how do we get northbound onto 41?" figured out. They're almost done with construction and they still don't have that figured out. And the Board of Commissioners decide, "Well, we'll just give them a lane of road." I don't know of anybody else that they just give people a lane of road when I can't even get my roads maintained in the Ranchettes. So those are the kind of things that are going on throughout the county. It is not just isolated to this side of the river or around the river, it is throughout the county with the out-of-control spending, the trampling of your rights, the misinformation that goes out there, the, I want to say, the lack of participation by the current Board of Commissioners. I had a meeting with Commissioner Dougherty about a year ago, talking about some issues and he said, "What do you want from us? We're just rubber stamps, the county employees, tell us what they want and we stamp it for them." I don't know about you, but I don't want leaders that just rubber stamp what somebody tells you to do. I think they need to be involved. They need to be at every level of that from the beginning to the end of a project to understand what's happening in that community, that they're supposed to be governing. So I have put it in the paper that should I be fortunate enough to be elected, I will resign my job with Allegiant and this will be my full-time position to make sure that your voice is heard, everybody's voice is heard. You have an issue, I might not be your commissioner, but I'll be at your doorstep addressing the issue. And that's what needs to happen. We need to have commissioners and leaders that you can have a sit-down with, you can have a conversation with and not feel like they're on a pedestal and I can't talk to them. We need a change in our politics and that is across the board. So I'm not your typical candidate, probably a little too far right for the Republican Party. I firmly believe that our rights need to be preserved and protected. That is the first and foremost job of our government and our government officials. Unfortunately, too many of them at the state, federal and local level have left that go and I can assure you, as a commissioner, I will ensure those rights are protected. So a little bit more about me, where I come from, I do have four kids, three of them were grown, still have one high schooler at home. My wife Tammy's in the back here with my folks. We do run a farm out in the Ranchettes, so we raise honeybees, we do produce, a few other things out there. So I know what it's like to put in a hard day's work, get your hands dirty and at the end of the day have to turn over that money for taxes to pay for land. And you wonder where'd that money go when you don't see things being taken care of or maintained as you think they should. So we need to address some urban housing sprawl out there, but I've come to this community to stay here. This is where I will be until they take me out and pay for a plastic. So I can assure, I'm not gonna jump ship at the first sign of troubles here in this county. We've got to stick through this. And it's not just about me getting elected, it is about getting people involved. If you go up to my webpage, there's actually an area on there that will take you to the county's website. You can get involved at the county level, whether you want to sit on a water committee or other committees, but also all the other committees throughout the county, whether it's the Republican Club, the Charlotte County DeSoto Republic Club, the RLC, there's a number of committees out there that you can get back involved, get your friends involved. And as a group, we can take our country and our county back.
Thank you, sir. You've answered my first question. This is sort of related, but general welfare is mentioned in the U.S. Constitution, but it's a principle that should be everywhere. What do you believe that means? Do you believe the principle of general welfare should apply to local government as well?
Well, I think our founding fathers delineated between federal, state, and the local when it came to what our elected leaders are supposed to do. So that general welfare does precipitate down at all levels of government. And it is the commissioner's duty, the elected leaders at the local level, to ensure that we are protected, we are safe, things are taken care of in that level, at the government level that they are ordained to do by our Constitution and our Bill of Rights.
Any follow-ups on that? Or the proper role of government, which is the first question which you already answered. Okay. As a commissioner, what government programs, restrictions, rules, and/or ordinances that affect our personal or business lives would you fight to repeal?
I've told quite a few folks out there, I get out there, I've dealt with code enforcement quite a bit. That is one of those groups that is constantly in your backyard, in your front yard, nitpicking everything you do in your life. That needs to be removed. There are times when you do need code enforcement. Nobody wants somebody putting up a kitten-killing factory in their backyard. However, when they get down to what type of plants you're putting in your front yard, your backyard, or your neighbor's too busy worrying about what you're doing rather than what he's doing, that is outside the purview of our government. And that is one of those things that does need to be reined in. And I think our governor last year signed a bill into law, went into effect July 1st or July 5th, I believe it was, "No more fake code calls just 'cause you're mad at your neighbor, 'cause you don't like the car he's got sitting in the driveway, a little bit of primer on the back corner and I don't like that, so I'm calling in on that guy. It looks abandoned.'" That all went away. If you want to call in, you got to pony up your name, put a little cojones behind what you're gonna say. So you better make sure it's legit, otherwise you will be charged with that investigation. So our governor's at least taken the steps to realize that we have a lot of municipalities and counties that have overstepped their bounds. Two years ago, he did the same thing with the "right to produce your own food" law. And a lot of people don't understand what that one was. You have all these HOAs in all these communities and say, "You can't grow vegetables in your yard, you can't do that to neighborhood." The governor says, "Yes, you can. That is your right." So we need to have that protected and those are some of the programs I would get rid of is do a complete overhaul at the code enforcement level.
Including the building department?
That's my second stop.
I mean, we are the only county in the world that I know of where you need a license to do demolition.
Well, the problem with the building department, address that. Putting my own home in, I've done some small construction projects throughout the county. We do a lot of chicken coops, things like that, on the agricultural side. But I have never seen a government agency such as our building department where your engineer can design everything right to the standards and then the plans examiner says, "But I prefer you to do it different." Violating everything that the engineer and the state has set forth as a guideline. That needs to stop because they aren't taking liability for that, you and your builder are, or you and your engineer are. So that needs overhaul, that's got to go away. It needs to be clear-cut, cut and dry. You shouldn't have to wait four to six months for a set of blueprints to come back from the plans department that, "Oh, it's okay now, you can build." That should not be happening.
Dealing with it now.
Yeah, it's all about the permitting. Did you know if you have a palm tree that's growing too close to your house, that you have to get a permit to get that removed? We have a rental property that we got fined for having three palm trees out of six or eight removed because they were against the house.
Do you know what the bulk of permits are? The bulk of permits are? That's revenue generators, which keeps a group of individuals, which also tags over into code enforcement because a lot of code enforcement also does the building inspection. So when you get into that, nobody should be telling you, "You need a permit to maintain your property." That's got to go away.
And putting in sheds you have to have a permit for. We have a tenant property. I asked them, "Can we have a shed put on because the tenants ordered a permanent shed?" They said, "As long as they get a permit." Well, they had to get a permit to move it here, so they thought they had a permit. We thought they had a permit. Nope, they didn't like that, so... And then I have another point I wanted to talk about. I volunteered for the sidewalk street drainage committee at one time. Because I live on Ackerman, there are no sidewalks there. We've got children walking to and from school buses, riding bicycles. One of them I know doesn't ride on any side of the road, she lies in the middle. Fortunately, the adult drivers are not running over the children. We had a rental property, it wasn't ours, a rental property next door to us had a guest who, the mother and two parents, that were pushing us forward down the road. Well, during the summer, we have the sunsets at the end of the, end of Ackerman and somebody ran into the lady and just drove for the evening. Safety is supposed to come first in this county. They've got to have a place to walk. The street is the only place they have to walk. Then I volunteered for the sidewalk street drainage program and I found for the, they put in very, very few sidewalks per year because they have a very, very low budget. I lasted three-quarters on that and realized that they had no intention of listening to any suggestions for changing the way things work and I decided I'd have enough of that.
So there's a way to address the sidewalk issue. When communities come in and they do a planned community, that needs to be something at the beginning of the talks with the developers, that that is something that is a given, whether it's on one side or the other of the street. I think this needing sidewalks on both sides is excessive. However, having sidewalks in a planned community is something that needs to be addressed during the planning phases before things are approved. However, when they have not gone that route, putting that burden back on all the taxpayers throughout the county, I do have an issue with that because it only serves a small group of people. And that is where I think the county needs to promote civic associations. And that is where you have a group in your neighborhood that is going to deal with that and interface with the county to make it happen, but that group works out with the civic association. The cost to do that, so it is from your community because it was not in an original plan, anything going forward new. We've got a lot of that throughout the county, we have areas where they just didn't do it, which comes back to a lot of the previous boards, a lot of the previous building inspectors or building departments just didn't require it. They didn't want to, or it was a friend of theirs doing the project and that added an extra $2,000 in profit to the job, so they just didn't require it.
Well, now we're in a situation where we've got sewers and new water lines being put in, although one on either side of the street. And where will the sidewalks go when you've got ditches, is what they call them up north, they call them swales here? I don't think there's any hope for the community to be able to get together and put sidewalks on one side of the street, even just the main drag. You know, we've got these loops and they got, the pipes are looped too, so...
Is there a room for a solar?
Well, there's about a 10-foot easement that the county owns that's for stormwater drainage.
And that's what they have to get in some areas, there's not a lot of land between the street and the home. And that's where you've got to have that civic association, which usually does have a civil engineer that will sit from your community on that board. And you've got to look at those kind of issues to say, "Can we fit it? Does it make sense to fit it?" In some areas, it's just not feasible. It's either we give up our drainage and everybody floods, or we have a sidewalk. Sometimes you can compromise and say, "Well, instead of a four-foot-wide sidewalk, we can go to three feet wide, still keep our drainage." And the county goes, "Ah, you can't do that." Well, that's where they need to work with that civic association to make it happen.
So when it comes to your first second step, I guess it supplies for both kinds of big-picture things. How do you approach the opposition that you would face in actually streamlining things or fixing problems you want to address? And secondarily, this reminded me, the deep state is what I wanted to call it, but you were talking about how the bureaucracy is dictating to the people who over-stamp it. How do you overcome that bureaucracy or the deep state type thing in the county?
You educate the people. You tell the people what's going on. That was one of the things when I was commissioner in Pennsylvania. My fellow commissioners often love to just dream up ordinances to control people's lives. And I had an issue with that. We didn't need to have that control over their lives. They're all adults. And yet, unless they're opening a kitten-killing factory, what are we doing? So anytime the rest, as a majority, would come up with an ordinance and they'd get it the whole way through a draft and they're out there talking about it, I'm the first one that will say, "No, I'm not going to support this and this is why and this is where it's going to lead to." We don't have that with our current Board of Commissioners. They all up there, they talk about it, "Yep, this is a great thing, it's gonna be wonderful." Occasionally during election year, you'll get a little dissent, but the rest of the time, everything seems to be just kind of pushed right on through, everything's great, we all agree, it's wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. Somebody needs to talk about the reality and the long-term issues for every ordinance that is developed. As far as going after the overhaul for the county, that's where you really need to look at and say, "Government is not responsible for employing people. That is not government's job. They're to create opportunity areas that allow businesses to come in and create the jobs." But it's not government's job to employ people. You do have to have employees to maintain a certain level of infrastructure and care, but at the point where when you get into things, one of the things I did in the state of Pennsylvania was negotiate our union contract. If anybody knows up north, unions run the show. We had a shifting issue with our police department. We knew we were racially overstaffed, but well, we're at 10-hour shifts. We went to 12-hour shifts, they flipped out, but it reduced our staffing levels. Well, very similar thing happens here. They work 4/10s. Well, now you've got, some guys are taken off Monday, other guys are taken off Friday, so now you're partially staffed two days of the week, so you're really only getting your true work done three days of the week down here. I know many county employees who just absolutely love that work method. They work four days a week, 4/10 hour days, they get their 40 hours a weekend. That's got to stop because you need the staffing levels every day during working hours, which then reduces the number of staff you require because you've now got a complement of people working five days a week. So you do have to account for people that are out sick, things like that, so you do have a couple of extras, but that's your first method to look at and say, "How are we staffing and how are we running our hours?" And at that point, you can start to deduce what your actual staffing needs are.
A separate question. Oh, okay, I didn't realize you were done. As far as the existing board or council, I guess it would be, so a number of them have been there for a fair amount of time. What are the terms of the existing governance body?
So we are in a charter review year.
And how does that equate to what you see as the problem and what you see as the solution?
Okay, so the problem with the charter review year is you have a charter review committee. The charter review committee is appointed by the Board of Commissioners. Usually friends, people they know, business associates, they put them on the board. Good example is a number of us went in and talked about term limits, part of your question. And what do you think is a good term? There are no term limits in Charlotte County for commissioner. They can run and run and run. One of our candidates right now is running for his fourth term. Another one that I'm running against is running for his third term. So when you start to look at it, you say, "How much is too much? How many years are you going to be in there or are you going to let new ideas, fresh ideas, people that understand technology and maybe we can reduce some costs with some technology?" They don't get an opportunity because the incumbents keep running and running and running. That's the purpose of the charter review board. They're supposed to take the input of the people, make the changes to the charter, which then set the governance to the board, which I think is a serious issue because that's the fox watching the hen house. I personally, this is my belief, that charter review board should be elected positions once every six years. It's not the biggest deal to have an election for the committee who is now made up of the people throughout the districts to make the decisions on what the people in their district want. The fact that our current board works so well together and rarely dissent, I've got great questions with that because I've been throughout this county. We have five districts. Now let me tell you, what they want up in Englewood is not what they want down in Tropical Gulf Acres, which is not what they want out in Washington Loop, which is not what they want in Punta Gorda Isles. It's quite a few different things throughout the county what's important to them. I put out a survey, it's got quite a good response as to what is actually important to the folks throughout the county. And based on the areas, ironically, they cluster together as to what's important, number one through 10, based on your area. And it's usually folks that are like-minded cluster to an area and that survey really has shown that to be true. So the fact that our board is completely and utterly on boards is what they're working for. They've got their own group of people that they talk to, that they're pushing things forward and I know, it's blasphemy, you're talking about your government. We all know that the backdoor deals happen and the families that run the county continue to run the county and if you don't get their okay to run, well, you're the bad guy. That's not how our government is supposed to run. The people pick who they want to run.
What's your position on zoning changes? I've watched some really, doesn't pass the smell test, changes, like an environmentally sensitive X number of acres, the old YMCA tract, okay? And now all of a sudden, we're gonna have commercial business in there, hopefully Harry's coming across the river with the, I call it the Lashley group, or whatever the group, but the money people, who have Dougherty and True X and, yeah, I would say the witches with that crew. I don't think tested to say it, okay? But it's, if I bought a house and it's zoned R3, okay, and somebody gets a zoning change so they can build a 7-Eleven across the street, okay, you've just changed the contract that I entered into, okay, with all the surrounding legal rights, okay, they come with them.
And I understand that. There are our times when an area, oh wait, was a good example of that. We have a lot of areas throughout the country, not just this county, that were at one point residential areas that just went completely belly up. The houses were in disrepair, you might have had three or four people living in 40 homes. And they come in and say, "Okay, maybe that area, because it's 500 yards from a factory, that's why people don't want to be over here anymore." At that point, yes, you look at rezone. That is part of the Economic Redevelopment Committee's job to look at that and say, "How do we repurpose areas that are blighted or in disarray?" And that happened throughout, Detroit was a great example of that. Louisiana had quite a few areas like that, but when you look at that, you're getting into changing those areas where somebody just wants a 7-Eleven across the street from you and there's no other 7-Eleven in a mile and a half and it's all neighborhood, I usually say, "Follow the money trail, who's involved." You've usually got friends of friends who are pulling strings to make something happen. And I'm not opposed to overlay districts where you have a residential area and you want a small strip mall to handle that whole area because you're driving 15, 20 minutes to get to any quick convenience, you integrate that as part of your community, but to just arbitrarily change one lot because somebody who knew somebody got it changed. I do have issue with that.
How did Sunseeker get 90 feet vertical? Well, we have height limits set by the county. Now, if that wasn't money, if that wasn't...
Everything Sunseeker has me baffled. The parking issue, the lane, the waterfront, the most recent asking to take Live Oak Park.
Yeah.
Last month, the commissioners had a meeting on that, if anybody paid attention. They're talking about potentially chopping down all the live oaks in Live Oak Park to make the parking lot so that you can access the waterfront.
By the way, that's in violation of...
The park was given to the county in perpetuity as a park. So we can try to gussy it any way we want and say, "Well, it's still a park." Well, yeah, you're parking cars on it, but...
There are all the right reasons for me to vote for you, Dave, and get what we have, these long-term, quintessential politicians, storage, out of there.
On that subject, I need to interrupt, I'm gonna do it anyway. What do you think, do you have any thoughts about what to do about the mall property that your commissioners just started?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'd take a look.
I don't think they bought it. I think they have a vested interest but didn't actually buy it. I think the initial investors still hold title to it and they, there's still a phenomenal amount of money owed on it.
Forty-four million.
Yes.
Like the county put up at auction 100 grand for something.
I think rights too.
But longer that something, there is that big ass debt there. It smells like another Murdoch village all over here.
Well, that's part of my campaign. Let's leave real estate dealings to the professionals and get the Board of Commissioners out of all real estate. If you are not going to use it for a pumping station, a park, or a government office location or something that has to do with the direct infrastructure of this county, liquidate the property. We are in the hottest real estate market in history. Get a real estate agent to list it and not take a loss because your buddy's interested in it for a...
You had a great deal in Elmore on those two blocks.
$260,000 loss on that. $260,000 loss on that. But Commissioner Deutsch will tell you, well, we shaved off a large portion of it. Yeah, about 80 feet to create an entrance into the other park. So when you look at these issues, they've gotta be out of the real estate business. They don't know what they're doing. They're taking losses on properties and that is why that's not their job. We need to leave that to the professionals. And that is one of the things I'm committed to, is getting the Board of Commissioners out of the real estate business.
You mentioned blight. I'm wondering if you, driving around Charlotte County, in your opinion, how much of Charlotte County is actually blighted? Take Parkside, for instance, or maybe Albre, you're at in Birmingham.
I haven't seen any blight. So blighted areas, you go through Detroit. You see areas, block after block, there's trash piled up, there's buildings in disarray. The windows are busted out, there's plywood hanging over everything and there's absolutely no construction, there is no improvement going on. That's a blighted area. Whether I choose to have an old car sitting in my front yard as a planter or a toilet with flowers growing out of it in my front yard is my business, not my neighbor's business and by God, not my government agency's business. That comes back to people's personal and property rights. And the county to come in and say, well, that's blighted because, well, we don't like that sitting there. Or we don't like the four-by-four on the side of the house. You need to park it in front of the house, is semantics. It's just control. And they've gotta release that control.
I got a follow-up on the mall question.
After that, let's get back to...
Sooner or later, a developer, somebody's gonna propose something to change it. What's your vision for that piece of property?
My vision is that the market will ferret out who and what goes into that location. And our Board of Commissioners has no business dictating what is going in or not going in. So if an investor comes in and wants to spend the money to buy it, tear it down and put up a condo complex, as long as they can go through all the requirements and they can meet the traffic requirements, they can meet the sewer EDUs and the water requirements and everything else on a fair level basis that everybody else would have to meet, then okay. If somebody wants to come in there and put an Amazon warehouse in and they can meet the requirements and they can meet all the parking they need, the traffic requirements for the trucks, then great, more power to them. But we all need that level playing field, not because you know somebody at the board that you get a sweetheart deal and we ignore the parking requirements, the height requirements and the ingress egress requirements. That's all gotta go away. I'm against those folks for their doing that.
How are we on topic? How are we on time for this part? How are we able to do it?
We're relatively okay, but we should get through a few of these questions before we get on to the side stuff. Are you still, are you asking anything and what we've done so far? Or do you want to leave it?
This is new.
Okay, let's wait. It may even be. What expenditures by the county commissioners do you believe are not applicable to the proper role of government and/or general welfare? Any specifics on expenditures?
Land property. They're talking about nearly $2 million to buy two lots in Placida. Are you kidding me? That was brought up last month. So yeah, again, more real estate expenditures. Some of the other expenditures out there, well, I've requested full budgetary numbers for everything, right down to time cards. And the county doesn't want to respond with a lot of that documentation because they're afraid people are digging too deep. So some of the expenditures I do see going on, after that I know for a fact, are our MSBU's and the misappropriation of those MSBU funds. And when you start to look at what's going on, some of them have been disbanded because, well, they're a little too loud and too squeaky and, well, we don't want to maintain you anymore. They just walk away from it. However, when you look at the way those MSBU's operate, it allows them to funnel employees that don't have any work into an area where there really is no work needed and chew up money out of something other than the general fund. They pull it out of the MSBU. This is not conjecture. This is a matter of fact. I've got the records on it. You've got a piece of equipment you know is failing, but you're running up and down 41, which is not an MSBU, doing some mowing and it's about to break. You take it out to an MSBU, you drop it off? Well, you fired it up and it broke. Well, that MSBU was working for them and now they gotta pay for that repair. And then it goes right back to where they were just working on, 41. So these are the kind of issues, the expenditures that need to stop in this county.
Yeah.
Related question to the real estate issue is, sometime ago, not too terribly long ago, they were talking about basically a $9 million, in my eyes, in my opinion, a $9 million giveaway at the Botman track for, let's see, appropriate term, affordable housing. And the net was a $9 million effective giveaway to a developer and whatnot. What's your opinion on that section?
So that gets into the affordable housing question as well. So there's a lot of confusion as to what affordable housing is. A lot of folks think subsidized housing is affordable housing. That is not the same. Subsidized housing, that's a federal government issue. I have issues with that to begin with. However, when it comes to affordable housing, the cost of construction is what determines affordable housing. The cost of the infrastructure that has to be put in place ahead of time determines what that home is going to cost and what your share of that infrastructure is, which ultimately gets passed on to the end buyer or renter. As far as the commissioners being involved in a situation like that, selling property at a loss for affordable housing, again, that's a misuse of your funds. Your funds, everyone's funds. They are required to get top dollar for the piece of property that they are liquidating in this market. And by selling it at a loss is a dereliction of duty. That is giving away your tax dollars. So when it gets into affordable housing, again, we come back to the building department. If that builder has to return to that plans examiner a dozen times for his "I prefers", that's money, that's cost. So that's where you have to start looking at, how do you shave that down to create less expensive housing so that the average person can afford it? Because I'll tell you right now, anybody just coming out of college or high school that wants to buy a home right now, they've got no hopes of buying a home in this area. When I moved down here seven years ago, the median income was about $38,000 a year. There's no way at $38,000 a year, anybody could buy a home in Charlotte County right now. It could be dilapidated, run into the ground, and again, look blighted with boards on the windows and you still couldn't touch it, making $38,000 a year. So that is what has happened to our community with the Great Migration. Everybody's come down here for the freedoms. Unfortunately, it's driven our prices through the roof.
Can we go on a little tangent of police with spending and also privileges? Civil asset forfeiture, police budgets? And I'm wondering if perhaps, like actually tailoring the laws where you have some sort of prioritization of the laws so they're infringing on people's rights directly instead of like victimless crime type stuff?
Civil forfeiture should go away. That should be banned, should be outlawed, state, federal, local level. And that is one of those things here in this county that I think we should be a sanctuary county saying, we will not allow our sheriff's department to do civil forfeiture, period.
And maybe, last thing I wanted to touch on, if we're wrapping up, is the Second Amendment and gun rights county-wide, how can you make an impact locally? I'm following up on the questions I asked Tom also, trying to get it.
Last year, the Board of Commissioners did vote to make this a Second Amendment sanctuary county. I would like to take that one step further, violate the law and say, sanctuary open carry county.
Will it file with the most?
Absolutely. And direct our sheriff to ignore that and allow people to open carry.
Can you be...
It has been a proven fact that communities, one in Texas where it is flat-out open carry and they encourage it, they have almost a zero crime rate.
Yes.
People are a little afraid when you see somebody toting a gun around to commit a crime because they don't know if they're going to use it on you to protect somebody. So I've always said locks, actually, my dad's always said this to me and I perpetrate it as well as locks keep honest people honest.
Thank you.
Just a question I heard from a couple people, and I don't know if you know anything, you may. Who are the bondholders of, it's kind of a bad subject, the mall?
I do not know who the bondholders are on that. If you want, I can go ahead and check that out and find it out.
How do you find out?
It's gonna be public record.
Yeah, Dave, my question is, I got two quick questions. Okay, when you get in Charlotte County, I don't know if people realize this, Charlotte County is so corrupt, they made a law, Punta Gorda did this too, that you cannot record a public official in a public freaking building or you will be trespassed. In a year and a half, I've got 22 tickets in Charlotte County and Punta Gorda just for pulling records and filming and fighting for free speech. Are you gonna get rid of that?
Absolutely. Our politicians need reminded, they work at our behest. We don't work for them. They work for us.
Correct.
And with that, they're recording you when you walk into that.
Yes, they are.
You have the absolute right to record them. The unfortunate thing that's going on right now is this county and the city of Punta Gorda are using police to enforce ordinances. Ordinances are civil law. They are a, if you violate it, well, we're gonna take you to court and sue you for it. Give you a code violation and that way you've gotta go to court. And once you're done with their court, you can appeal it to an actual state court that has to enforce the real laws of the great state of Florida.
Correct.
Using police to enforce code enforcement issues such as that is a travesty and it needs to stop immediately.
It is.
Absolutely, it is.
Yes.
One more quick one. You're running for commissioner, but can you do anything with the schools? You know, the schools are at odds with people that are trying to, you know, for parental rights, possibly protesting some of the things that the schools are doing to the point where I'm in front of a school on a public sidewalk protesting some of those issues and I'm arrested? Is there any way you can stop that?
So what that comes down to is if you are in a public place, not on school grounds, you have the right to protest. Everyone has the right to protest. I think our country's gotten very confused over the last two years that if you burn a building down, if you smash the windows out in Wendy's or light your buddy's car on fire, that's a peaceful protest. But if you hold up a sign that says impeach Biden, all of a sudden, you're a terrorist.
That's correct.
That is what has happened in our country. And we all need to wake up. Every one of us need to wake up and take this country back or we're gonna lose it.
Yes.
And we are headed down that path very quickly. And 30 years ago, if somebody would have said, this is where we are going to be, that we are going to have a pandemic and they are going to mandate everybody wear a mask and everybody get a shot or you're gonna lose your job, they would have told you, you're completely out of your mind and possibly probably had to baker acted.
Correct.
Unfortunately, that's where we are today. And everybody goes, well, it's just a mask, it's just a shot. No, it's your rights.
Correct.
And at the local level, the commissioners need to do everything they can to protect those rights. I was very outspoken over the mask mandates that were going on. I think you saw me at several of the meetings. I urged the Board of Commissioners, hey, if a private business wants to put a mask requirement on for coming, you can't violate people's American with Disabilities requirements. Once you identify as disabled, that's the end of the conversation. You can support that business, hey, you want to do it, that's fine. But as a government entity, you do not have that right to mask or require a jab as a condition for anything. That's what happens in third world nations and in dictatorships and communist nations, not in America.
So can you, does the commissioners have any power to tell the schools to knock this crap off?
School Board is a completely separate entity. They govern what goes on in the schools. However, there can be an interface between them, a dialogue. And that's one of the other things I'm looking at, not just with the school board, but we need a citizens' community. We are under siege by Mosaic, not just in this county, but the surrounding counties and what's going on. I don't know if people realize that the bulk of the phosphate fertilizer that they pull out of Florida does not stay in this country. It ends up in China. 98% of it ends up in China. We don't get the benefit of that. But we get the ungodly sights when you fly in, a couple of you guys are pilots. When you fly in, you see those settling ponds coming in. You see the blue water and the colored water tinting out into the waterways. You know those chemicals are leaving the locations. We need to have a citizens' committee that are a volunteer group to keep an eye on some of these issues, keep an eye on the politicians in the other counties as to what they are doing and encourage them to take a stand for clean water.
Amen. Thank you.
Can I add on a question to this that might make it broader on all the things you're talking about? So it could be related to masks, guns, and you've already hit on individual points. Could you say that you might be able to limit the enforcement of these laws on a broader scale? Can you address how you could limit maybe the sheriff's office or any other agency that would be related to the bureaucracy you'd be in control of to limit the enforcement of things or not infringing on other people's rights?
So the sheriff's department, the sheriff is an elected official. They run their own department. While the county approves their budget, they run their own budget. I would encourage the rest of the Board of Commissioners to actually look through all these budgets, understand what's being spent and why it's being spent, and scrutinize it like it should be. You don't spend money just because somebody asked for it, you scrutinize it. If you go to your bank and ask for $400,000 against your home, they're gonna want to know what you're using that extra money for. Same thing should be going for, whether it's be the sheriff's department, goes for the school board, any one of those to look at it and say, okay, what are you doing with that? Now, as far as telling them they can't enforce the current laws of the state, there's no authority to do that. Again, it comes back to having that dialogue and saying, look, this is where we're at. This is giving the rights that are guaranteed by the Constitution and the Bill of Rights back to the people, will you get on board? And you do it publicly. We've gotta start calling some of these folks out publicly, not these backdoor deals. It needs to be public.
Thank you.
With the issue that we've got going on with the dedicated public access, self-maintained right-of-way throughout the county, what's the plan for that?
My community, and you're very close to my community, have a very similar issue. Ours is very unique out in the ranchettes. If anybody paid attention, we have almost 40 miles of roads in the Charlotte Ranchettes and it joins the airport property to the west. To the east is the Cecil Webb Wildlife Preserve. So what you have is this one-mile-wide, three-mile-long set of roads that were put in by Colonel David Guwan back in, final approval was in 1967. It was done through the legislature, it was an end runaround. The McQueens tried to develop it, it's gonna be too much money to do. They took the end runaround, called it a drainage district, which in 1967 terms meant drain the water off of it, fill it in and build up on it. And that's how it was approved by the state legislature. It was engineered, it was designed, the easements were procured. The county had zero to do with it. So I really can't completely blame the county for the situation that we're all in out there. However, they can take some claim moving forward, which they have now chosen not to do. So March 9th last year, they passed an ordinance at about 10:30 in the morning, abandoning the Charlotte Ranchettes and all our roads, saying they have nothing to do with it, no maintenance of drainage, no maintenance of roads, you're all on your own out there. Then at about 2:30 in the afternoon, at their afternoon land meeting, adopted a new right-of-way ordinance, which says they have the right to go in even on private roads and maintain and clean out the drainage and everything roadworthy. So they dump us in the morning under the old ordinance, develop a new one in the afternoon and adopt it, and then leave us all hanging out to dry, including yourself. Our roads are marked "public", even though they're easements, ours are not "rights of way". The fire department has the right to use them. The general public and the rest of the world has the right to use them. And based on their new ordinance, developed four hours after they dumped us, have the right to maintain them. This is just another end runaround by the Board of Commissioners to shirk responsibility and not take care of something that they should be taking care of. It does come down to a public safety issue. Me personally, kinda thankful they left because my taxes went way down. My assessment, since we no longer have an MSBU, I own my own earthmoving equipment and maintain my road. I got the nicest road in the ranchettes. I help my neighbors out when I can. But it has actually fostered the community to start pulling together and working together. While it's very difficult out there, it has been a benefit to many of us out there. It's brought people together that otherwise would have not come together to work together.
The leasing out there, jurisdiction for that area, I have noticed is when they come out, they can't, they don't know what the law is for those type of roads. out, they can't, they don't know what the law is for those type of roads. So they're like, it's a private, no, it's a public, no, it's a right-of-way, it's an easement, they don't know. So when you have someone doing something lawful and they blatantly see it, an officer, they don't know what to do. So even the officer are lost, and this is what Commissioners have done. I feel like we are, we are the victims. And I'm looking at, trying to see maybe, maybe what they can do as a law, why, lawfully, why are you allowing these people being victimized? And, and the person on the next street that has a paved road has more rights than they do on my road. So weird to be left out there.
So with that, you have the same rights. Don't let anybody tell you you don't, because you pay the assessment on your taxes for the police, just like everybody else pays the assessment for the police. You are supposed to be provided equal protection, and that's at all levels. So if I was fortunate enough to be elected Commissioner, that is one of the first things I would direct is the Sheriff's Department, you will take care of those folks.
I will.
You will patrol the ranchettes, you will patrol dirt roads such as Bronco, you've got Knights Island and a number of other places that are dirt roads that they don't want to touch. That is their responsibility as our law enforcement, to maintain civil issues with that when it comes to traffic accident problems, domestic disturbances. That is their obligation and their job, that's what they're paid to do. With your tax money.
I hope you fight for us if you do that.
Absolutely, I'm in the same boat you're in.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Dave, appreciate it.
And I'm doing it the old-fashioned way, doing petitions. So if you haven't filled out a petition to put me out on the ballot and you're willing to do so, please let me know, I'll bring you that petition.
Is there anyone else collecting petitions? Too much? Just Dave? Okay.